Okay, Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. We are back for Council Bill 23-0381, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2024. We are here for American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, spending. Merrick Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee, joined to my right by Councilwoman Felicia Porter, 10th District, Councilman Isaac Gitsi Schleifer, 5th District Member of the Committee, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District. We are also joined by Representatives from Mayor Brandon Scott's office and Council President Nick Mosby's office. To my immediate right is Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee. Director Kearney, the floor is yours. You have a presentation. How many slides? Okay, and what estimated time you need for the presentation? Fifteen to twenty, perfect. Folks, if you're speaking, we got new technology in council chambers. If you see the top of my mic, red is on, so just hit that icon that looks like a little person there with a phone. When you are done speaking, please turn that off. These microphones are pretty sensitive and catch a lot. Thank you. Director Kearney, floor is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Costello, members of the City Council and interested parties, but most importantly, good afternoon to Baltimore City residents. I'm pleased to share budget information regarding the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds for fiscal year 2024. Baltimore City residents, you may have heard comments or seen stories and articles that might lead you to believe that the receipt of $641 million in federal relief funds is a bad thing. Those comments, soundbites, stories, and articles are designed to sow the seeds of division and doubt and make you think the worst about Baltimore City. But today, I want to share good news about Baltimore City's promise through the work funded by the American Rescue Plan Act and facilitated by the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs and partner agencies and organizations. But you don't have to take my word. You could also talk to the 221 small businesses that have received technical assistance through our partnership with the Baltimore Development Corporation and another 275 businesses with assistance forthcoming, or to the 233 nonprofit organizations that received relief funding through our partnership with the Baltimore Civic Fund, or you could talk to the 182 nonprofits, or I'm sorry, daycare centers that received funding through our partnership with the Family League, or to the 110 artists that received direct assistance facilitated by BOPA, or the 37 hotels and accommodations providers that received financial assistance facilitated through Visit Baltimore, or the 200 young families receiving direct assistance through the Guaranteed Income Pilot Program facilitated by the Cash Campaign, or the 98 unemployed or underemployed Baltimore City residents through Moed's Higher Up Program, the 205 underemployed or unemployed residents that have been hired through the Small Business Wage Subsidy Program, or the residents in the Upland Community who have long awaited progress on the affordable housing units in their community, or perhaps the participants in the Behind the Wall Program who are preparing themselves through employment for a better life post-incarceration. Or you could potentially speak to the residents in the neighborhood where one of 34, sorry, 35 parks and recreation projects are beginning. There is indeed good news about the use of ARPA funds in Baltimore City, and we're happy to share that with you today. If you'll advance to Slide 3, please. But let's quickly cover where we started. As a reminder, the city received a total of $641 million in ARPA funds between spring 2021 and summer 2022. Mayor Scott established the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs to facilitate this funding in July of 2021. Next slide. The Recovery Office has approved for 10 FTEs, of which nine are currently filled. In less than two years, this office has facilitated 88 projects with partner agencies, enhanced internal controls for partner organizations, established a comprehensive risk management framework, including robust monitoring and compliance initiatives. We have also hosted a number of trainings for partner organizations on topics that include internal controls, single audit, and compliance with 2 CFR 200. And at this time, I want to take a moment, a personal privilege, to thank the dedicated public servants that comprise the Recovery Office, who give their time, talent, and treasure every day and perform with the utmost integrity for the benefit of our partner agencies and organizations, as well as to Baltimore City residents. Thank you, team. I thank you and appreciate you. Slide 5. The Recovery Office is monitoring and the compliance mechanism for the use of ARPA funds, not to be confused with the implementation of projects, which is by our partner agencies. Agencies that are provided ARPA funds are responsible for their projects and for delivering programs and services with ARPA funds. In addition to monitoring compliance, the Recovery Office is also responsible for communicating data and information on project progress, performance, and expenditures to the Treasury, city leadership, and to you, the public. To that end, in January of 2022, just six months after the establishment of the Recovery Office, we created and published the ARPA Reporting Center, which we simply refer to as the Dashboard. Important to note that the Dashboard is not a requirement, but instead an effort to serve you, our residents, to provide accountability and transparency. This online tool provides information on proposals for funding by entity, commitments, and expenditures by topic area and project progress. Next slide, please. Interested parties can obtain specific details on funded areas of interest, which also includes a brief description of the purpose of funding, as well as the funded organization, and the amounts for which that organization was funded. Next slide. By law, all jurisdictions in receipt of ARPA funds must submit a quarterly report to the U.S. Treasury with information on projects, performance, and expenditures, as well as annual, as well as an annual recovery report. The Recovery Office publishes all submitted reports on our website. Next slide. And Baltimore City residents, if that wasn't enough reporting, we also have the Council Report, which is legislatively required for the Recovery Office to submit monthly reports on project progress, performance, and expenditures, and those reports are also published on our website and accessible to you, the public. And with these various mechanisms, the American Rescue Plan Act funding is by far the most transparent accounting of grant funds in Baltimore City government, and any assertion to the contrary is patently false. Baltimore City residents, to obtain facts over fiction and data without the conflation of feelings and opinions and mischaracterization, please do visit our website at arpa.baltimorecity.gov to see our submitted reports and good news about how ARPA is impacting community. Also, to see ARPA in action, we invite you to follow us on our social media pages, @recoverbmore on Instagram and on Twitter. Next slide, please. I'd now like to share detailed budget information for ARPA-funded projects for fiscal year 2024. But first, again, to ensure that we're all on the same page while reviewing this information, I'd like to clarify a few terms which we'll use throughout this presentation. You may hear the term commitment, obligation, or expenditure. When we're talking about commitments, we're talking about the amount that the mayor publicly talked about in any funding announcements or any press conferences. Obligations, we talk about the amount of funding that is made available to organizations on a fiscal year basis, and expenditure refers to the amount of funds that are spent against that obligation. You will hear me reference those terms throughout the presentation today. Next slide. In our approach to budgeting and monitoring, we have worked closely with partner agencies and organizations to identify funding levels needed for program and service offerings during the period of performance. ARPA budgets differ a bit from general fund budgets in that unexpendable funds can roll over from fiscal year to fiscal year, much like the capital budget. The Recovery Office continuously monitors expenditures against obligations and analyzes rate of spend and compliance with federal regulations. Next slide. Since the inception of this office in 2021, ADA projects across more than 70 organizations have been funded. About $640.5 million has been committed for areas covering violence prevention, health, homeless services, food insecurity, and workforce development, among many other areas. About $90.1 million has been expended as of March 31, 2023. And as previously noted, we continuously monitor expenditures to determine if budget modifications are needed. Next slide. So now to speak specifically about the Recovery Office budget. The Recovery Office was budgeted at $3.6 million in FY '23. Our cumulative expenditures, which also include expenditures from FY '22 through March 31 of '23, equal $4.7 million. The actual spend is slightly less than what was budgeted due to unrealized costs from areas such as salaries and office space. However, those funds will be rolled over into FY '24 to address costs related to increased consulting support for monitoring compliance activities, which I'll talk more about later in this presentation. Next slide. Total expenditures for the Health Department are slightly under $10 million. Our spend rate was impacted by ensuring procurement processes were compliant with the federal law and also due to FEMA reimbursement, as many services were reimbursable by FEMA until May 11 of 2023. At the time of developing our budgets, we were unsure, and there was uncertainty about when FEMA reimbursement would end, and we are currently working with the Health Department to identify the program and service level needs post the end of FEMA reimbursement. Next slide. For the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, total expenditures to date are $3 million, and the spend rate is expected to pick up as, this year, as contracts with community-based organizations that are assisting in doing work with the organization have been executed. MONZI has selected 59 CBOs for 62 grants and contracts totaling over $32 million across the next few fiscal years. We expect, again, to see spend to increase this year, especially now that we have executed contracts with our partner organizations. Next slide. For the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, total spend to date is $5.1 million. The spend rate was impacted by the additional ARPA funds that Moed received directly from the state and also some unrealized enrollment in youth works in summer 2022. However, the youth works numbers have soared for summer 2023 with over, with about 7,700 approved applicants, and we also expect for more program participants to be supported by the city ARPA allocation in FY '24 once state ARPA funds are expended. Next slide. For the Economic Recovery Fund, there was a total of $25 billion that was dispersed to our Economic Recovery Fund fiscal agents. Of those five organizations, four have fully expended funds. BDC has expended, or the Baltimore Development Corporation, has expended about $4.3 million, and we expect for all remaining funds advanced to the organization to be expended in FY '24. Next slide. For the Mayor's Office of Broadband and Digital Equity, also partnering with VSIT, has spent more than $1 million this fiscal year since the office was reorganized. Phase 1 included the connection of recreation centers to the city broadband network, and to date, we are proud to say that 10 centers have been connected, with the remaining ten to be connected in FY '24. At the time that the budget book was printed, we did not have an executed grant agreement and final budgets in place for Phase 2, which includes laying fiber optic cable for digital equity initiatives that will be performed by the city and also some assistance with Enoch Pratt. The fiber contract was recently approved for legal sufficiency, and we expect for work to be underway this year. Pratt Library received $4.4 million of our digital equity initiatives, and that contract has been executed. Next slide. For the Department of Recreation and Parks, on May 24, Mayor Scott announced a list of projects to be funded by ARPA, which includes 20 playgrounds, seven athletic courts, two trails, and three recreation centers and three pools, for a total of 35 projects. Three pools and two recreation centers are in design, with another recreation center ready for construction and another 11 playgrounds and athletic courts, where construction will be completed by the end of calendar year 2023. Next slide. Our partnership with the Cash Campaign of Maryland for the Guaranteed Income Pilot Program is a $4.8 million investment. The Recovery Office dispersed $2.4 million to the Cash Campaign in FY '22 and '23, and $1.6 million has been paid to participants. Due to the program's start time, we did not disperse additional funds as budgeted in FY '23, but again anticipate dispersing all remaining funds in FY '24. Next slide. The Department of Planning, $5.46 million represents the amount that was dispersed to the Baltimore Civic Fund, the fiscal agent for the Clean Courts Program. The amount spent on the ground to date is about $1.3 million across five CBOs who hold contracts to assist the Department of Planning in this initiative. Across those five CBOs, 44 employees have been hired to date. The Clean Court Program is providing needed services to clean and green communities that most need this assistance, and we're proud of the work that's happening in that space. Next slide. The Department of Planning also has ARPA funding available for food insecurity. Expenditures for this investment are slightly over $900,000. Vendor contract negotiations for online SNAP, BIPOC local food production, farmers' market incentives, and the produce prescription program presented a small challenge. However, we've been able to get past that hurdle and see that all nine contracts are in place, and we should see expedited spend in FY '24. For the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, expenditures to date are about $190,000. Four out of the five agency agreements have been executed with MOHS. Two programs have started, that's Shelter Demobilization and the Housing Navigation and Landlord Engagement Program. There are also two that are nearing launch, which is our Flex Fund, as well as the Housing Accelerator Fund. That budget was just finalized for the Housing Accelerator Fund, and again, that happened after the publication of the budget book, but we will, are happy to share that information with you post this hearing. Also, the city is in active negotiations regarding shelter acquisitions, and there'll be more updates to come in that space. For the Office of Performance and Innovation, this is a $1.14 million investment focused on better standardizing performance plans across city agencies. OPI has expended about $90,000 in part due to the timing of onboarding new staff. OPI has onboarded three new staff members, and they have focused their efforts to date on working with 16 agencies in drafting and finalizing performance plans. The Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs also provided $500,000 to BOPA for Artscape. A total of $500,000 was committed, and $250,000 has been disbursed to the organization to date. We are continuing to monitor plans to plan Artscape, and will have, and are looking forward to Artscape in September of 2023. Next slide. For the Department of Housing Community Development and also partner agencies, that is a total of $104 million investment across all agencies. About $1.5 million has been expended towards housing investments, with another $60.1 million in executed grants across partner organizations. DHC deprioritized capital investment projects because of construction timelines, labor shortages, and other inflated construction costs. Resident protections are represented with a zero for FY '23 and '24 because we are still working on grant agreements with the organization. However, it's important to note that the resident protection programs, that some of them existed before ARPA, and ARPA is providing additional funding to provide support to assist more residents. Next slide. The Recovery Office directly awarded $43.4 million to 45 nonprofit organizations, providing a variety of programs and service for the benefit of Baltimore City residents. Between October of 2022 and January of 2023, the Recovery Office received BOE approval on 44 grant agreements directly with these nonprofit organizations. Forty-two of the 45 nonprofits have received disbursements totaling $12.775 million. The Recovery Office has also developed a disbursement schedule for grantee, grant awardees across fiscal years and are looking forward to continued partnership with these organizations as they continue to provide the needed program and services that are for our city. Next slide. The Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, the disbursement to the fiscal agent totals $1.49 million, and the organization has spent about $500,000. There are seven agreements that have been executed with partner organizations that will provide benefit navigation and legal services to the immigrant population in Baltimore City. In addition, FEMA, in addition, MEMA, has started outreach efforts to city agencies to begin translation of city documents and other language access services. Next slide. The initial allocation to DGS to address HVAC challenges at library locations was $4.25 million. Additional ARPA funding will be made available and discussed as a part of another slide that is upcoming. DGS is currently awaiting the return of bids from contractors, and will use that information to help inform which of the prioritized library locations will be addressed by ARPA funds. The bids we expect to come in by June 8, in another week or so, and hopefully will have a prioritized list shortly thereafter. For the Department of General Services, $6.45 million was allocated for the purchase of 100 hybrid vehicles for BPD. The funds will not be expended until the vehicles are delivered. There are 65 that will be built this year with an expected delivery date of October 2023, and the remaining vehicles are to be built in January 2024 with an expected delivery date of March 2024. Next slide. So we've talked about our partnership with the University of Baltimore and Morgan State for Performance Planning and Evaluation Services. Our expenditures to date total $205,000, which includes some funds that were expended in FY '22. Our university partners have assisted in reviewing performance measures across funded programs and services, provided research on industries impacted by COVID, provided an assessment of evidence-based interventions as required for U.S. Treasury reporting, and have identified impact indicators that will help us measure the impact of ARPA citywide. No funds are budgeted for FY '24, as we expect for rollover funds from prior fiscal years to be utilized, and any additional funds, and additional funds could be added or allocated as needed in subsequent fiscal years. The Office of the Chief Data Officer is leading the charge to redesign the city's website and modernizing public-facing processes, for example, permitting and also methods to contact seniors during emergencies. There is a team of four that was fully staffed as of March of 2023, and we're excited about the work that the Chief Data Officer and his team are doing to help modernize processes for Baltimore City government. Next slide. So as previously discussed, there was about $80 million that was set aside in ARPA funds for budget stabilization. There are conversations, as you're well aware, about the debt ceiling and conversations about using funds that have not been obligated as a part of the negotiations, and so, understanding that we are, we have always planned to use the budget stabilization funds and to program them for programs and services to benefit Baltimore City residents. So we have now done so and intend to program these funds for projects as we continue to review the economic conditions and some of the uncertainty around the conversations around the debt ceiling. Since all funds have to be fully obligated by the end of calendar year '24, and we also want to give time to those agencies to spend by the statutory deadline. Those funds are programmed for the following purposes. There are $40 million for capital projects to DOT and the DGS, which we'll talk about in a subsequent slide. $15 million for the Department of Public Works, about $7.3 million for arts, culture, and tourism. $5.6 million for the VSIT laptop refresh and for modernization of some of our city buildings and office and meeting spaces. There is also $3 million for the Park Heights Library, about $3 million for public markets, an additional $2 million for monitoring and compliance support for the Recovery Office, is $2.7 million for general fund restoration. You may recall that there were a number of positions that were frozen as a result of COVID. There were conversations with some agencies about positions that they needed to be restored, and so that reflects some of those positions between Finance, Procurement, and a couple of other agencies as well. And then there was also money set aside for fiscal officers. There is conversation about building our bench strength and our agencies around fiscal education and having people within each agency's for CFO positions. The idea was to have individuals that would serve with our BBMR team be trained up and then at some point be deployed to city agencies to serve in some of the lead fiscal agency roles. And so we are still intending to do that and are working with BBMR and with the Department of Finance around making that realization a reality. Next slide. So for a further breakdown, on the previous slide, we know that there is $40 million that will be used for capital projects. The capital projects were selected based on criteria such as need, requests from the CIP funding, coordination with the planning department, and also the ability to complete the project within the statutory timeframe. So you'll see that about $12.9 million will be made available to DGS. That includes money for city building improvements, as well as for HVAC replacements at two libraries. There is also $27 million that will be made available to the Department of Transportation. That will include funding for ADA projects, for sidewalk reconstruction repair, and also for street resurfacing. We are in the process of working with the Department of Transportation to identify the prioritized locations and hope to be able to share that information with you as soon as it's available. Next slide. I also want to quickly recap fully expended grants. There was $4.9 million that was made available to Lexington Market. That funding has been fully dispersed to the organization. There is also vaccine incentives. There was $10.4 million that was made available to city employees to incentivize them to get their COVID vaccines. And then also for the Economic Recovery Fund, again, there were four organizations, the Baltimore Civic Fund, Visit Baltimore, the Family League, and also BOPA that have fully expended their funds, and we still have BDC that is still dispersing funds to small businesses for assistance. I think that wraps it up. Risk assessment. So much has been made about, about the risk assessments, and so I want to talk about that quickly. Risk assessments are required by 2 CFR 200. So this shouldn't be newsworthy. This is Grant Management 101. And so we looked at information from all of our organizations that includes city agencies, as well as quasi-government agencies and nonprofits. We asked them a number of questions about their federal grants management experience, number of staff that would be dedicated to monitoring the grant, their internal controls, and a host of other areas. Based on the information that was provided from those organizations, we developed risk levels. We sent letters to all of those organizations, which identified what their risk level would be and also how we would monitor. For those organizations that were medium to high risk, we have monthly reporting requirements. For those that are low risk, we have quarterly reporting requirements. That's both for expenditures, as well as for performance. And so of all of our entities, there are some that we did not break risk, risk rates. For example, like vaccine incentives, there was no need to do a risk rating for a project like that. But we have 43 entities that we categorized as low risk and another 24 that we categorized as medium to high risk. And again, we will monitor those organizations based on their risk level, but every organization that has grant funds will provide performance and expenditure information to the Recovery Office. Now that should wrap us. Yep. Chairman, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've also been joined by Councilman Chris Burnett. I think I mentioned you, maybe? I'll just start from the top. Councilman Z. Cohen, First District Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District Member of the Committee, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, Council President Nick Mosby, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, 10th District, and Councilman Isaac Gitsi Schleifer, 5th District Member of the Committee. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director. I guess just want to make sure we're on the same page. So out of the 641, 640.5, it has been committed. 90.1 has been expended, right? Right? And so that means that we have a delta of like $550.4 million is rollover, right?
That's correct.
Right? Just subtracting the expended versus commitment. I guess, Madam Director, from a BBMR perspective, the $550 million that hasn't been expended to date, that should look at or appear as, I guess, revenue coming into the next fiscal year. Like, we should be able to see that, that number in the, in that revenue number.
So the, the cash that we have received from Treasury for our ARPA award sits restricted within our available cash to be spent, to be spent down for the various projects based off of the spending plans that Director Kearney had laid out.
So is that different than other grants that we, like, other non-lapsing grants that we receive?
No. The thing that makes this, I suppose, a little bit different is that many of the other grants we receive are reimbursable. ARPA is a little bit of an outlier in that they distributed the cash upfront.
Understood. So when they're, when we receive non-lapsing grants that aren't reimbursable, meaning we get the money upfront, that wouldn't be reflected in revenue?
It would not be reflected in our general fund revenue because it's restricted in a state or federal grant fund. a state or federal grant fund to be committed for that particular grant that it's associated with.
Understood. But when we do, like, revenue certification or we're looking at revenue going into the next fiscal year, should that be itemized somewhere?
So typically, when we come to brief the council regarding our revenue projections for the upcoming fiscal year, it's largely dependent upon the general fund revenue since that is where we have the most discretion. Our revenue estimates that get published in the executive summary outlining the Board of Estimates recommendations does include anticipated new grant awards, federal and state, that are reflected in the appropriations for the upcoming year, but they typically have not looked backwards at sort of existing balances.
Got you. So this doesn't set a precedent. We've always done it this way.
No.
I guess the concern there would be, American Rescue Plan has been such a hot-button item.
Sure.
You know, we get all types of grants all the time. I guess it would be easy for the council to lose track of where the money is and even wanting to know that we need an update on the money. So just really interested, I guess, like, moving forward, kind of how that looks and how that appears. The next question I have is the same line. When money is, I guess, committed to certain agencies, that money shouldn't be reflected in the budget book either?
So the decision was made...
I mean, I guess the question, what's the difference between that type of grant and another grant that we reflect in the budget book?
Yeah. So the decision on this one, on ARPA, was made to fully appropriate the award in one entire budget in the Office of Recovery Programming Agency. I will say that's a little bit different than the reoccurring grants that we receive in agency budgets year after year, because many of those do live in the agencies that are responsible for administering those programs. I think part of the reason, part of the logic behind how the ARPA dollars were set up was to, because these awards have been, were set up as applications came in after the initial award was established, having the appropriation allowed them to execute agreements and then to allow those entities to start spending down their funds.
Understood. But for instance, like, the $550 million that has already been committed and, for lack of a better term, has already been transferred to that agency? Is it fair to say that or no?
So...
Like, does it come out of, like, one budget, one bucket of money? Or when Rexon Parks gets $10 million, DOT gets $10 million, is that $10 million given into another isolated bucket specifically for that DOT, for DOT to use and the other one for Rexon Parks to use?
So the dollars, and some of Director Kearney's fiscal staff might be able to speak more directly about how they've set it up.
Okay.
They might defer that to the ARPA.
Sorry about that.
So for city agencies, because the funds are budgeted and managed centrally, they receive money as it is dispersed. So every invoice, every contract gets approved, and then they're able to spend. And they're permitted to spend, so we do not transfer funds to them. They are using our account numbers, and they're permitted to spend up to their fiscal year budget.
Understood. So that's a great point. So all the money is basically held, say, in the recovery office, right? And then agency has been committed by the administration to spend $10 million. They're able to show you that they're spending that $10 million specific to what they were granted the $10 million for, and then you disperse the fund. It's kind of like the fiduciary partner of, the pass-through of getting it to whoever, consultant or service or agency that the money needs to go to.
Correct.
Got it. So why, what's the decision, I guess, back to finance, that, say, like, the $550 million from a grant that's held with the recovery office, why wouldn't that be under the, in the recovery line items, like, as an activity? Like, even if it was just one line item that basically showed the spend down from the past years to, like, where we sit today, because it's basically zeroed out, like, in the book. My thought process was that it was in one bucket, and now hearing that it's in one bucket, that makes me happy, right? That's a good thing, right? But then I think it should also be reflective inside of their budget description through their activities to reflect that appropriately.
Yeah. So the reason that the dollars don't show up in terms of the budgeted amount in the subsequent years is because that would double up the appropriation since all of the appropriation was established back when the full 600-plus million was established. I think we can, I definitely hear the feedback that the presentation of how it looks in the agency detail is very confusing. I think we tried to get around that in terms of how we summarize it in the executive summary, but again, there's a disconnect between the two different documents. I think that's something that we could partner with, with the MORP team to see how we could improve how we're conveying that information about sort of what we're expending at the activity level for our fiscal '25 documents.
Yeah, definitely. I totally agree about the appropriations chart. I guess what I'm asking is, subsequent to that, it's just an expenditure chart. That way you'll be able to see the delta, and we'll also understand and know that where the money's coming from. Because right now, when you look at, starting with revenue certification, going through the budget overview, going through the ARPA's office overview, it's like, okay, well, where's this money? Like, how is it lost from the standpoint of, you know, Director Kearney has a pretty straightforward presentation. This is how much was committed. This is how much has been expended to date, and here's the reason why. The expectation is you should be able to fumble through a budget book and identify where that money is, right? And it was, I was concerned that maybe I just wasn't sophisticated enough to see it agency by agency, right? You were gonna, you know, teach me that today. But then, you know, when we hear from them, it's like, no, it's still in one bucket, which is great. We should just reflect that easily on the ARPA office. So I guess, you know, we can work on that fiscal year '25. Thank you. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Director, in light of the ongoing negotiations between Congress and the President regarding raising the nation's debt ceiling, can you talk about what guidance you may have gotten from our federal delegation or their staff with respect to clawback language, or any guidance that you've received from the Treasury Department and how that might apply to our ARPA funds that we've been allocated?
So there hasn't been any guidance from our federal delegation. I did have a conversation recently just to talk about our status with regard to spend. They agreed that it made sense for us to go ahead and program the budget stabilization set aside. Our grant documents, we've been very clear with all organizations that we would monitor spend and that if, at any point in time, the spend rate wasn't what it needed to be, that we would be willing to take funding back and potentially reprogram that for other uses. And so all organizations that we have grant agreements with are aware of that, and we've already started to engage in conversations with organizations to let them know that that potential is very real. In addition to that, for our nonprofits, since we have disbursement schedules with them, we are monitoring the spend rate there as well, and we will hold disbursements if we see that the spend rate is not at a rate that we think makes sense for the projects and services that they're providing, and we have done that as well.
So you referenced, you had a conversation. Can you say when and with what category of person, a member, one of their staffers, Treasury?
One of the staffers from the governor's staff, as well as one of the staffers from, actually Congressman Fumei's staff, were just asking us about spend. They were not providing guidance, though, on, about the federal negotiations that are happening on debt ceiling, nor were they providing guidance to us about clawback. Just asking again about spend rate, and we had the conversation about programming the budget stabilization set aside.
And when was the conversation?
Probably about a week ago. I don't recall the date.
Got it. Does it make sense to reach out to the federal delegation to get guidance on what they see happening with these debt ceiling negotiations and if there is going to be clawback?
Yes. I mean, it makes sense. We're monitoring. We're also talking with MoGAR about that as well. So even if we're not being contacted directly, we're certainly in coordination with MoGAR about any conversations that may be happening at the federal level. But yes, we will continue to keep our thumb on the pulse of those conversations to make sure that we're not in jeopardy of losing funding.
Appreciate it. Is anyone from MoGAR that can comment on that? Thank you.
Nina Thamelis, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. So I participated in the conversation with Director Kearney last week. I spoke with Congressman Fumei's office this morning. They should have a deal tomorrow sometime is what the most current update is. So far, we don't have a final understanding of what may or may not be removed. Everything is still on the table, but things are looking optimistic, but we won't know until tomorrow, likely.
Thank you. Director, can you go back to the slide with DPW? I think there was a slide for DPW. I just don't know which one it was. You had a lot of slides, much less than Director Ryer, but still a lot.
I figured you'd be pleased if I had less than that. So there's not a slide that's specific to DPW, but we included it...
It's covered here, yeah. No, I appreciate that. So of that $15 million allocation, do we know which and if there is a portion of that is going to new or upgraded trash or recycling collection trucks?
So there is about $5 million that's going to load packers. There's another amount that I don't know, off the top of my head, that's going towards life safety issues. There's also some funding that's going to route optimization, and what was your question again, for which specifically?
Trash and recycling collection vehicles.
Load packers, $5 million.
Got it. Can you, per our conversation on Friday, can you get the committee a full breakdown of this consistent with the conversation we had? Specifically, you know, which projects for DOT and DGS, what those categories of spending are within public works, the breakdown of the $7.3 million for all arts, culture, and tourism? And I think those were the only major ones that we had asked for a breakdown on.
So yes, we can get you arts and culture. The breakdown for DGS and DOT were on the subsequent slide, and we put that back on the screen. So that includes the city building improvements. There are a couple of projects that are being considered there. We can provide detailed information on that. There are the two specific library HVAC replacements that are noted. I mentioned in the presentation that we're working with DOT right now to determine the prioritized locations for the other projects that would be funded with the $27 million. So we don't have that project list yet.
Okay. Can you go back to the previous slide, please? Just want to make sure I fully articulate my request. So get to capital projects in a minute, but the breakdown for DPW, the breakdown for arts, culture, and tourism, I think the rest of this was pretty straightforward. And now if you could jump back to the capital projects slide, please? The breakdown of city building improvements, which buildings we're talking about, and more clarification on ADA projects and street resurfacing, that's about a $26 million combined bucket of funding. So...
That is where we don't have clarity yet, but, so we wouldn't be able to provide that immediately, these other things we can provide, but it would take us some time to work with DOT to get that list.
So did DOT give you a hard number that they needed?
So DOT provided a request to the Department of Planning with a hard number of projects that they, that are a hard number for ADA and also for street resurfacing and sidewalk reconstruction, based on conversations that we had with Planning. Planning came to us with an estimated amount, and that is how we divided the ARPA funding up in between DGS and DOT.
So that amount is likely less than what DOT had originally requested, of course?
Yes, it is. It likely is.
Okay. I would be very curious to know how we're planning on breaking that down before just saying to DOT, here's $26 million, spend as you see fit. So if we could get a breakdown of that before the end of budget week, that would be very helpful. So MoGAR and Council President's office, you guys got that request? MoGAR, you guys good? Thank you. We've also been joined by Councilman Mark Conway, 4th District, Councilman Schleifer, and then next up is Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So on one of the slides, it said that Visit Baltimore received $2.5 million. Visit Baltimore is here an hour ago, and they said they requested ARPA money on multiple different occasions, and they were denied every single time. So can you just tell us what that $2.5 million is and if they did, in fact, get approval for $2.5 million?
So that statement isn't accurate. They were not denied. We are still, we still have projects that are under consideration because we got a number of proposals. The $2.5 million we facilitated, we used Visit Baltimore to provide funding to hotel and accommodation providers, so they provided grants to those entities that applied.
So they were approved for $2.5 million already?
They were a fiscal agent for the Economic Recovery Fund to provide $2.5 million in funding to hotel accommodations providers and hotels. There are still Visit Baltimore proposals that are still under consideration by the administration.
Okay. And can you, as a committee request, provide what the breakdown of that $2.5 million specifically, where it was going to, so that we can forward that to Al Hutchinson?
So it's in the council report that you receive monthly.
Okay. The second question I have, if you can go back to the pie chart...
Wait, Councilman, hang on one second. That's in the last monthly report that we received?
Every dime that has been distributed through a fiscal agent, through the Economic Recovery Fund, is in the appendix of the council report that we provide to this body every month.
Got it. Thank you.
Can you go back to the pie chart?
Can you escape this guy from the beginning?
Oh, and just a note of housekeeping for our city agencies, you do not have to sign the sign-in sheet, but feel free to continue to do so. But you don't have to, we're still going to call on you. Councilman Schleifer.
Okay, so you said that all of the funds, 640.5, has already been obligated or appropriated. Last, the last hearing we had, last conversations we had, there was $480 million allocated and appropriated. Can you just tell us what the breakdown is of the final $161 million, where that's
That's something we'd be happy to provide to you. We can look at the delta between the list that we shared at the same time last year and what we have this year. It might take a moment to make sure we have the accurate list.
Okay, that's fine. And so did you guys, were there any announcements about this hundred, the last $161 million? Because I didn't see anything since $480 million was allocated. I didn't see that we got to the, to the full 641.
You have a council report that is provided every month that provides information on any funding announcements as well as in the expenditures. So because you didn't see an announcement doesn't mean that the information was not made available.
So are you saying that the latest announcement, the latest email report that you have is going to total $641 million?
No, because it's not going to include the information that we just provided on budget stabilization. That decision hadn't been made by the time that we provided the last council report.
Okay. So on the last council report, how much money was obligated and appropriated?
We would probably have to do some math to be able to identify what the obligation and what the commitment was as of March of '23.
I'm happy to provide that number. So... I'm happy to provide that number. So for the March, the data as of March 31, 2023, was $563 million committed. And then our obligation number, which is something that we report to the Department of Treasury, was $291 million.
So you said as of March, it was how much? 583?
Yep.
563?
One moment. Yes, 563.
Okay. So in the past two months, there is, I guess, $78 million. So where does that $78 million going?
The information that we just shared with you about the budget stabilization set aside. So if you add 563 and AD, you roughly get to about 640.
So can you go back to that slide and show me what you're referring to? Because there was a lot of stuff from the beginning, a lot of things mixed together here. It's not clear what this final 80 million is going to. Because I mean, we didn't see any announcements on it. It's a lot of money. And it's also closing it out. We thought that there was still a lot that was left to be discussed and possibly funded or allocated.
It's good. All right. You guys got an upgrade in technology. So very quickly, I just wanted to add a point of reference here. So the conversation that we just had about the potential clawback of funds related to the debt ceiling is what led us to go ahead and program any additional budget stabilization funds that we had outstanding, which was about $80 million. And so that is why that decision was made. So I just want to underscore that as you're, as the recovery office is pulling this information.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that. I mean, I think the last, the last hearing that we had on ARPA, at that time, 480 million was already obligated or appropriated. And there was a lot of concern from the council about other agencies and other specific things within the city government, basic city services and others that we felt should have gotten funded that haven't. And the conversation then, if you go back to that hearing, was that there would be further dialogue and conversation with the council about how to allocate that remaining money. At the time, it was about 160 million. And so then what I'm hearing now is that the latest email that we were sent, which it's cumulative emails, doesn't necessarily single out specifically here's, you know, this money that's being obligated and appropriated. Sometimes there's announcements from the administration and sometimes there's not. So the ones that, when there have been announcements, it's clear, hey, this 50 million is here, this 80 million is here. When it's just, you know, buried in an email, we don't exactly see specifically that, you know, that differential. And so now we're hearing that there's an additional, the final $80 million has been obligated and appropriated to something. And we didn't get that dialogue or that input that we were told that we would have. And so I think that, you know, we should hear in this hearing what that the 80, I really think it should be the 160 million, but if you want to just go back at the last 80 million, I'm fine with that too. Just to understand what those decisions that were, that were made were so that we know what that's going to. And now we no longer have any say or any chance to have a say since that 80 million is now accounted for.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Team, I'll turn it over to the recovery office, and they can walk you through where the budget stabilization set aside is going towards.
So I don't recall what the last, what the last hearing is that you're referencing. If you're talking about the last budget hearing that we had, that would have been May of last year. So there were a number of announcements that were made that included funding for food insecurity, that included nonprofit awards. There were four rounds of nonprofit awards that were made. There was also, the Clean Core announcement was made in that timeframe. There was also money for MEMA that was made available during that timeframe. There was also the announcement of ENOC Prac. We're also sharing with you now the additional $80 million that was originally committed for budget stabilization set aside that we are now sharing that we are programming because of conversations that are directed about the debt ceiling. We have provided information about that breakdown. $15 million for parks and recs, 7.3 million for arts and culture, 5.6 million for BSC and for modernization of city buildings. $3 million for park heights, $3 million for public markets, additional $2 million for this office for additional support for compliance and monitoring, the $2.7 million for the general fund restoration positions, the 1.3 million for the non-fiscal officers, and then the $40 million that we just discussed that would be provided in between DGS as well as between DOT.
So this list here, according to the slide, says expenditures as of March 31st. So that's 80 million. What, that's the first 80 million. The question that I'm asking is about this 80 million since the last email you sent. I will go back to that last email, which I'm sure this is included because you said it's to March 31st. But you said that there was, the remainder was funded, the remainder was allocated since that March 31st. So in April and May, there was an additional $80 million that was appropriated. So what is that $80 million?
I don't know what you're referencing when you said that there's $80 million between March and April.
Okay.
I don't understand what you mean when you said that there's $160 million that had been committed.
Okay. So is this $80 million listed on this list, the final $80 million that closes us out to 641 million?
It is. It is the money that we set aside for budget stabilization funds that we are now programming.
Okay. So this says, this is as of March 31st. What you guys just said was that since that last email.
I don't know what last email you're referencing, what day, what month.
The last email that, I'm sorry, I don't, don't know your name, but the last email that you referenced.
So the.
Let me jump in real quick. Are you, Councilman, are you referring to the, the monthly ARPA reports that they're required to provide to the council?
Yes, the ARPA office just told us that the last report that we should be looking at got sent to us as, as of March 31st. What we also were told was that there was additional monies allocated and appropriated since that March 31st email between March 31st and today, which gets us up to the $641 million. So everything is now allocated. As of March 31st, it's my understanding based on what you guys said, was that we didn't hit $641 million as of March 31st. We're at 641 today, and I understand the reason behind that, which makes sense. But what is the final, what money has been allocated between April 1st and today?
So I will, I will share that our office did provide a briefing to Councilman Costello and to the City Council President really just a couple of days ago to provide an overview of this budget stabilization money. And it wasn't included in the last council report because the decision had not been made yet. So this is, this is late breaking news, if you will, that we're bringing to this group. We, as a courtesy, of course, we provided a briefing to Councilman Costello and the City Council President, and we're sharing it, we're sharing it here. So it's, it is a recent development, but for the sake of transparency, that's why we wanted to bring it to you today.
So how much money has been allocated since March 31st?
I would use the term commitment.
Commitment. How much money has been committed, starting the end of this, so April 1st to today, how much money has been committed?
So these are, these are the buckets that we plan on spending these funds for. We don't have executed grant agreements with organizations just yet around some of these funds. So when we're saying committed, this is what we plan on programming the funding for.
Okay. So there's nothing additional beyond what we're seeing on this slide that has been committed since then. Is that correct?
Since March 31st of '23?
Correct.
That's correct.
So then what's, what's the late breaking news in April and May?
So when you're talking about, so you're referencing the 173 billion for March 31st, is that what you're talking about?
I'm talking about, let's, let me backtrack. We just found out yesterday, I just found out yesterday that the total $641 million has all been committed, allocated, appropriated, whatever term you want to use. That was, that was news to me. What I'm trying to understand, because the last public hearing, ARPA public hearing we had, we are up to $480 million expended. So my, from this council's perspective, there is $161 million from that last ARPA hearing to today, which has been extended, obligated, appropriated. And so what I'm trying to understand is that this slide is saying as of March 31st, here are these projects. I want to know, does this include everything? Is there anything beyond this that gets us to the $641 million? Because from my calculation, there's $161 million. What has happened in April and May that has gotten us to the full $641 million?
So we will get you a full accounting of the $641 million, and we will do our best attempt to tie it back to the timeline of when the announcements were made or the, the funding was allocated. Is that possible, team?
Thank you. So from April 1st to now, you'll differentiate what was then and everything from before April 1st?
Yes, we will follow up with that documentation.
Thank you very much. Does that count as my two questions?
That, that, yes.
Okay. I'll wait for the next round.
Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Director Kearney, I want to first thank you for leading this office and very trying times, setting up this office. It's a yeoman's, yeowoman's strength that, that you did, and I just want to congratulate you and your team for setting up that office. Most of my questions actually have to do with the sustainability of the office, and we've talked about this on a number, we've talked about this on a number of occasions related to sustainability of the office after ARPA funds are exhausted. And so I first want to start out with sustainability of the COVID-19 public health response. FY '24 expenditure specifically for food insecurity. One of the, one of the bullet points has to do with the food distribution sites. They are listed throughout the city. What is the plan to kind of integrate that into some of the public markets funding that you all have? I believe it's $3 million from the budget stabilization. And then just kind of talking through the larger food insecurity, food insecurity plant throughout the city. How does this fund, how does this funding kind of fit into that large perspective? Because food insecurity was such a serious issue during COVID-19.
So I want to first start by saying that Baltimore is not an anomaly. Every city in every jurisdiction that received ARPA funding are certainly going to face these same challenges of continuing programs and services post-ARPA. We should view ARPA as an influx of funding, but always knowing that the funding was going to end and that we should be thinking about how we continue to provide programs and services post-ARPA. So I don't want to pretend to speak for the Department of Planning or for BCHD who both have our food insecurity work. But certainly, we've been having conversations about that and making sure that we're using data to analyze where we really have need. There are a number of food distribution sites. So we are working with the Department of Planning to look at information to identify what the trends are in those areas, to see if we need to continue to offer food services or distribution in those areas, or if we need to move them to other places. And so I don't think that there's an easy answer that I can give today about what that looks like. But certainly, we are having conversations with all of our agencies to think about how we plan post-ARPA. I don't believe that any of our programs and services will be sustainable at the levels that we currently have them because $641 million is a lot of money to try to replace. And we're not going to be able to do that as soon as ARPA is over in calendar year '26. But we certainly do have our eye on, on sustainability and are continuing to work with our agencies to think about how we plan for those things.
Thank you for that response. And my next question actually is for CAO Leach. With regard to, and I know this is not your hearing, but this is, I believe, kind of just an accounting of, one, how we are chasing after federal and state dollars and how this office can transcend into that.
Absolutely. Thank you for that question. So I think what we have done with the Office of Recovery Programs and also with the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development is really establish a model for how we can really be proactive in not only seeking, but also managing federal dollars that come into the city of Baltimore. Currently, we have about nine staff that are located within the Department of Finance, within the Grants Management Division. And it is my hope to, to work closely with the Department of Finance, as well as our other partners within government, to really figure out how we can reimagine our Grants Management Office, taking some of the lessons that we learned from the Recovery Office as well as the Office of Infrastructure Development so that we can have a more, a more robust office focused on pursuing federal and state dollars.
With regards to the staff that's currently in the ARPA office now, what's the plan to kind of transition them into those respective agencies that you just mentioned?
Yeah, so I think, one, we have a very talented team in the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs. And I think there are lots of opportunities either to transition them into a Grants Management Office, one, to extend the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs, and/or to have them support some of our agencies and provide that grants expertise within agencies or also within the city administrator's office. So it's something that we're actively working on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll save my next questions for the next round.
Thank you. Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Kearney, the follow-up I had on, I guess, the remaining funds is, I guess, what are some of the key delays in getting money out the door that you're still seeing? I know, you know, that question is probably, the answer to that has probably changed over time, but what are we seeing right now?
Yeah, so certainly, we wanted to spend some time really standing up programs and working with our agencies around establishing criteria for programs, making sure that we have the appropriate frameworks for monitoring and compliance. We also had to make sure that our city contracts were compliant with the law. And in some cases, we had to work with outside counsel outside of our, our law department to identify whether contracts were compliant with 2CFR, with 2CFR 200, the Code of Federal Regulations, to make sure that we weren't liable or find ourselves in a situation where we were not being compliant. I think certainly Workday was a little bit of a challenge for us as well, getting some of our nonprofit organizations set up so that we can start to disperse payments to them. But by and large, really just taking the time to make sure that we are doing this right and setting up the robust monitoring and compliance mechanism that we need across the volume of organizations with which we provided funding, again, with varying levels of internal controls as well as grants management experience, and making sure that we got those things right. So I would say compliance, ensuring compliance of our, all of our grant agreements, getting our nonprofits and other organizations set up in Workday, and then also just making sure that we have the appropriate criteria for management, for managing those programs and services.
And forgive me if this was covered already. The ARPA office will conclude in '25, 2025 is that?
Technically, '24.
'24. And I guess for that, to follow up to your response, would entity, maybe this is for you or CAO Leach, will still serve as that sort of oversight and compliance body for the remaining funding allocation?
So I don't know that there is a response for who would take over, but certainly, we are providing monitoring and compliance information to our agencies to make sure that they are following the same processes that the recovery office is using. We have templates and other job aids and things that we provided to our partner organizations to make sure that we're, we got the same level of compliance across organizations. And so I think that some of our city agencies may be able to take on some of the monitoring and compliance work, but there are some of the smaller ones that could be a little bit more of a challenge, and I'm not sure what the plan is for that just yet.
Okay. And I guess, CAO Leach, are you able to give us the, I guess, a little bit of a forecast of where things will be headed? Because my concern is, I think you all have done such a good job at ensuring compliance to this point, but there's so many funds that are unallocated that my concern is that there could be some drop off.
Yeah, it is, it is likely that we will continue the office beyond '24.
Okay. There we go. All right. All right. Make sure I'm in the right section here. Actually, it looks like you covered everything else I had for the section. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. As a reminder, we are at 1:40 PM. We have a hard stop at 2:00 PM for our next session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also, Director Kearney, I want to thank you. I hear very strongly from you that we are not leaving $1 on the table. We're going to spend it all, and, and we want to spend it all. So, to that end, to the, some of the agencies that are in that middle to high risk, what are some of the supports that you're giving them? I mean, I hear that you're doing, you know, sort of compliance monitoring and all of that. I'm specifically, obviously, concerned about MOHS and how, and DHCD. I think for, for DHCD, there's obviously some costs are fluctuating in terms of acquisition and stabilization. It's just, that's the way it is. So, what are the supports that you're giving to those organizations, and what should we be doing to be able to make sure that, that every single dollar that's allocated in this lovely chart gets allocated?
So, I would say that for DHCD, again, they prioritize the capital projects that we really want to make sure were completed within the statutory timeframes. And of course, that takes a lot of effort to work with developers. You know, I talked a bit about making sure that our contracts and things were in compliance with 2CFR 200, making sure that the developers and others who are involved in those projects understood what those requirements would be, and so that took a little bit of time as well. I think you will see increased spend in FY24 around those projects. But in terms of supports, we have conversations with DHCD on a bi-weekly basis to talk about any challenges or barriers that they might be having. We elevate things to our law department or to our external legal counsel if we need to, if there are concerns about some of the compliance and how funding streams kind of play with one another, because in some cases, ARPA is not the only source of funding. And so, making sure that in the capital stack, we understand how some of those rules and regulations comply or conflict with one another and what that means. We also are monitoring spend on a monthly, or I'm sorry, on a bi-weekly basis with the organization as well. And so, we do cover that information with the Commissioner and her staff, and make sure that there is awareness and understanding of where we are in process. We also have consultant support that has been provided for us to understand, again, some of the rules and regulations around ARPA with our projects, and also with some of the programs that are being provided by DHCD as well. So, I would say that we have robust supports for, for DHCD, but I think that because the bulk of that funding is invested in capital projects is why you see less spend. For MOHS, we also are, are very joined together on getting that money pushed out as well. We've worked very closely with MOHS over the last year and some change to establish program requirements and criteria for the programs that they have. They have also onboarded a consultant, and we've been working with the consultant as well, around shelter acquisition and making sure that we have a, a firm posture for shelter acquisition as we're negotiating the purchase of hotels. We've also been working with the staff to, again, we, we meet monthly, and mostly bi-weekly, actually, with MOHS as well, around standing up their programs and around making sure that we have the robust monitoring and compliance criteria that's necessary for the programs that they are trying to administer.
Is there something you want to add on MOHS?
I, I would just echo that we're regularly providing technical assistance to them, and sometimes that is review of compliance concerns. It may be reviews of program design, bringing together different stakeholders to get decisions quickly. So, they have, I know at this, at this time last year, we were still working to get fiscal year budgets put together. We now have four out of five of those done. We have four out of five agreements. Programs have started to launch. That is not to say there's not more to do. There certainly is, but we have seen progress over the last year.
Thank you. I'm just concerned because as, because costs are going up for, you know, infrastructure as well, so we have a flat amount for infrastructure for one particular project in my district, and then, of course, some of these others, that as that fluctuation, ARPA is stagnant. It can't go anywhere else, but these others are. And so, if there needs to be some other pursuit of other money, what does that look like, you know, in order to actually get these projects done? That's what my main concern. So, hopefully, you'll sound the alarm if that is needed.
And we're also coordinating with the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development as well, so they are also working with us on some of the, the capital concerns that are, that are occurring in, in both of those agencies.
Yeah. That, that's great. That makes a lot of sense as well. And then, my other question was around MOHS. It is articulated in different ways in different parts of the budget. Are we getting one hotel, or are we getting two? Because last year, we said we were getting two, and the budget, again, it says hotel, hotels. Are we getting one, or are we getting two?
So, I think that there's, that the plan is for two, but I think that's all going to be contingent upon the purchase prices, right? And so, we didn't want to tip our hand much on-
Director, Director, I apologize for interrupting. I'm going to jump in. We'll address that during CAO's session next. Yep.
Okay.
The one or two. Yep. That's something we've talked about extensively, so.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, great. I'll, I guess I'll wait for that then. Thank you.
Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Director Kearney. I, I've got two very quick questions. Quickly regarding affordable housing, I noticed we'd only spent a million of the 104 million. Can you tell me what's going on there, and what is our timeline for spending and what we're seeing there?
So, as previously noted, a lot of the, the focus has been on getting the capital projects together for the affordable housing developments. That took some time to work through some of the compliance and some of the, the legal issues, to make sure that all of our documentation and all of our agreements with developers were compliant with the law, so that took a little bit of time. We are starting to see an uptick in spend for acquisitions, as well as for demolitions, and so, we should see more spending in those areas in fiscal year '24. But again, that, some of the challenge was really behind the capital projects, and because we are, we as an ARPA is not the only funding in the capital stack, getting those funds to play together was really challenging in some cases, and so, that did take us some time to, to work through the mechanics of that.
Given the unforeseen hurdles, getting money to match, do we have any sense of our ability to make sure we spend that on time, just noting that we're still very early in, in the spending?
Yeah. So, I think for the capital projects, I think that we don't have question about those things. There are some programs and services that are also a part of the housing allocation that have not been stood up yet. We are talking to, to agencies to make sure that there's an understanding that they need to stand up quickly in order for us to fully expend by the statutory deadline. But again, as we continue to monitor spend against obligation, we will make some decisions about whether we need to reprogram funding if we are to see underspend in those areas, because again, we don't want to leave a dollar on the table, and so, that might mean some very tough conversations with agencies.
And to that question, do we know at what point timeline-wise, we would begin to have that question, that question answered?
So, for us, those conversations are going to begin sooner rather than later, because all the funds have to be fully obligated by the end of calendar year '24. So, we want to engage agencies in any that we may have to make some budget modifications. We want to be able to engage those agencies, and for any agencies that we would be providing funding to, we want to make sure that we're providing them enough time to obligate those funds, so that they can complete all of their projects within the statutory timeframes. So, those conversations will, will begin soon.
Okay. And do you, how do we, is it going to go through a full process, much like we did before, or do we anticipate something very different?
We, we wouldn't have time to go through a full process like that, but I mean, we have a total of 517 proposals from city agencies, quasi's, and nonprofits. We can certainly look at some of the proposals that have already been submitted to us. There are also other areas within the city that we know need funding, and so, we will look at those as well, as opportunities to use any reprogrammed, reprogrammed ARPA funds for those purposes.
Okay. Thank you. The, my second question is, just noting, probably some technically good news, and just, I noted, I noticed that we, we purchased 100 hybrid vehicles for BPD, and I, I think that's a great step in the right direction. I'm curious, why did we decide on hybrid? And had we considered at all fully electric vehicles, noting over time what they may mean to the fleet?
So, that is probably a better question for DGS and BPD.
Okay.
I don't know what some of the considerations were around fully electric or not, but we knew that we needed to, to purchase some vehicles for BPD because they were badly in need of vehicles, and so, but some of the considerations around hybrid or fully electric, I wasn't a part of those conversations, so I couldn't speak to that.
Okay. And then, I think along those very similar lines, and of course, this is going to be a DGS question, so as you sort of sort this out with DGS, have we considered any of the basic infrastructure needs that we might have for hybrid and fully electric vehicles, like charging stations and otherwise, as a, you know, when we start to reconsider where funding goes, that might be something to consider where we have-
Okay.
-overturn over time?
So, noted.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So, we've got about nine minutes left. We're going to go back to Councilman Burnett, who's recovered his second question. You had a question, Councilman Coen? Okay. So, we're going to go to Councilman Burnett, then we're going to go to Councilman Cohen, and the President had a quick follow-up to a previous question. And then, what we're going to do is, we have a hard stop at 2:00 PM. The committee's going to follow up with you by the end of the day, as to whether or not we'll send a list of questions in writing or request that you come back, because unfortunately, we just did not allot enough time during this session. So, I'm going to ask the three council members to please be brief. Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Has your office identified any misuse of ARPA dollars, and if so, what recourse for the misuse of those funds exists? I guess clawbacks or anything?
So, not, not any misuse that we've identified. We've certainly had organizations that have called and questioned certain uses, and we've counseled them about what 2CFR 200 tells us about, how we can use funds, and what's considered indirect versus direct cost and things like that. So, we have not identified any misuse yet. Our ability to be able to claw back is, there is a provision within our grant agreement that would allow us to be able to terminate any contracts if we were to find any fraud, waste, or abuse in terms of the use of ARPA funds. So, yes, we could claw back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam Director, and your team. Appreciate the work that you all have done. Wanted to ask about Clean Core, knowing that we, compared to other municipalities, pay less for some of our frontline sanitation workers than some of our neighbors do, and that we have a shortage of sanitation workers. I wonder specifically about sustainability for the program. You know, knowing that these funds are committed and that after the 640, it's gone, given that there was a need, I'm sure, to buy equipment, to buy materials, what was the thinking around sustainability for the neighborhoods that were selected for Clean Core? Because I assume we will continue to have issues with trash and illegal dumping in those neighborhoods.
I'm going to ask you to hold on that. That's probably going to be better directed to the Department of Planning. Is that correct? Can we, are you going to be here for the planning one? Okay. Let's push that to planning, because I know that's already going to be a topic of conversation. Director, if you have anything to add on to that, just from the ARPA office's perspective, but again, planning was really the, the driver in that.
Right. I would just say that we've had conversations, and we've talked about it as being a, a workforce development program with the idea of being able to use those workers to, to eventually be able to be employed by DPW or some other city agency that also provides similar services. So, while you may not see Clean Core in the way that you see it now, I do think that there are conversations that are happening between Planning and DPW about how we continue to employ the model.
Okay. So, again, I'll ask this in the subsequent hearing, but, so the thinking is that folks would be sort of rolled into city agencies if they want to continue to?
That is certainly the desire, is to be able to, to use this as a workforce development pipeline in the city agencies.
Okay. I will ask that question again later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Just following up, I think Council Chairman Schleifer, you're going to follow back on an itemized, like breakout of what was done. I believe he asked for like a time snap. You did provide a snapshot to, to, to me earlier, based off my request, that kind of showed commitment and then subtotal. And there, there's a variance. So, now, we won't be able to get into minutia detail today, but if you guys could look at that snapshot you provided me, and looking at the variance between commitment and subtotal, it's a variance of about $157 million. If you could just look after that. And then, Mr. Chair, I, I think you're going to determine whether we ask additional questions in writing, or if we're going to come back. I'm going to let you determine it, but I want to make a quick statement, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
And this is just, you know, I'm, I'm freestyling here, but I, I want to say this, you know, very clear and very publicly. You know, I think Director Kearney has been, Shemar Kearney has been put in a very challenging role, and has done an amazing job. I think that a lot of the questioning and concern that comes from this body is that the way this process was established and set up and has been executed is quite different than many of our colleagues around the country. The council is much more involved in, you know, not taking necessarily lead on it, but at least a participatory role inside of it. The way that this money was distributed out in the 2021 ordinance of estimates, I believe, was done in a very, very unique way, in, in a way where the council has literally listened to newspaper, news announcements, or seen on Twitter. You know, in the past year or so, you've done an amazing job of trying to keep us up to date on like what was going on or how it's been going on. But I think that's where the frustration is. It has more to do about what was originally done and the foundation of all of this, and absolutely nothing to do with your competency, your leadership, as well as your team. So, I think that's really important to put that on the record. There's a tremendous amount of questions that this body continues to have, and I think that that is just the nature of the way that this was established, for something that is really important, not to us, but more importantly, to our constituents.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I'll, I'll circle, and I want to second the President's comments, as we've talked about before. A lot of this is the frustration of the communication of the council, of the decisions that's being made, the decisions that are being made, and the extent to which the council has been formally engaged prior to those decisions being made. I, I think what we're going to do is, is likely find time to, to have you come back. I will be in touch later this afternoon or early this evening to, to figure out the specific logistics of that. I want to thank you and everyone from your team. We're now going to go into recess until 2:00 PM sharp, when we have the CAO. Thank you.